Good night everyone. Welcome to our night's in my meeting. And so we begin by singing this song, "What a mighty God we serve." What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before him, heaven and earth adore him. What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before him, heaven and earth adore him. What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. The Lord has given me authority to walk all over you. What a mighty God we serve. What a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before him, heaven and earth adore him. What a mighty God we serve. Hallelujah. And I also ask Sister Alicia to come and invite the Lord's presence in our midst.
Blessed be the Lord, can we stand for prayer please? Most righteous and eternal God, we want to thank you for the gift of life. Father, we thank you that we are gathered here tonight in your presence to lift up and exalt your holy name. Father, we invite your Holy Spirit to come and tabernacle with us tonight. Father, we pray that whatever we say and do this night will be done to your honor and to your glory. Father, we pray that the presenter will do an excellent job tonight. Father, we are just inviting your presence once more in our midst. God, we ask you to hasten the steps of those who are on the way. Father, we ask you to bless us individually and collectively. Father, tonight we just want to thank you that in spite of all that is happening in our country, we are privileged and blessed to be here once more in your household, God, to lift up praises unto your holy name. Father, we could not have done it without your guidance and your protection. And so once more, God, we just want to thank you and bless you for tonight that in Jesus' name we have prayed, amen.
Thank you, Miss Alicia. We will now be singing this hymn to the work, to the work, it is projected. To the work, to the work, we are servants of God. Let us go follow the path that our master has drawn. With the balm of his counsel or strength to renew, let us do with our might what our hands want to do. Toiling on, toiling on, toiling on, toiling on. Let us hope and let us watch and pray and labor till the master comes. To the work, to the work, let the hungry be fed. To the fountain of life, let the weary be led. In the cross and its banner, our glory shall be, while we herald the tidings salvation is free. Toiling on, toiling on, toiling on, toiling on. Let us hope and trust, let us watch and pray and labor till the master comes. To the work, to the work, there is labor for all. To the fountain of life, let the weary be led. In the cross and its banner, our glory shall be, while we herald the tidings salvation is free. Toiling on, toiling on, toiling on, toiling on. Let us hope and trust, let us watch and pray and labor till the master comes. To the work, to the work, there is labor for all, for the kingdom of darkness and error shall fall. And the love of our Father, exalted shall be in the loud smelling chorus, salvation is free. Toiling on, toiling on, toiling on, toiling on. Let us hope and trust, let us watch and pray and labor till the master comes. Hallelujah. I just praise the Lord. I want to welcome everyone tonight to our meeting. I want to welcome all those on the various platforms. Tonight we are going to be blessed with this Money Matters. So just keep listening and maybe you will learn, you hope you will learn how to manage your money. Our scriptural lesson comes to us from Matthew 5 and we'll read from 13 through 16. You are the salt of the earth, but if the salt loses its flavor, how shall it be seasoned? It is then good for nothing but to be thrown out and trampled on the foot by men. You are the light of the world. A city that is set on a hill cannot be hidden, nor do they light a lamp and put it under a basket, but on a lampstand, and it gives light to all who are in the house. Let your light so shine before men that they may see your good works and glorify your Father in heaven. This is the word of the Lord. This is a reminder that we as children of God are the light of this world. And so once we are children of light, we should not be walking in darkness. And so it says, "Let your light so shine before men." So let our works be pleasing to God that others, our neighbors, our enemies, they will see that we serve a living God, that we serve a mighty God, we serve a God who forgives. And so let our light shine before men that they may see our good works and glorify God, our Father. Tonight our theme for this year is the quadrennial year, but this is being and making disciples. Being and making disciples. It's on the screen, being and making disciples. So for this year, it is in the cities. Next year will be a different thing to the children. Okay, okay, others will come. So this, this we are season now, it's being and making disciples of ourselves. So we are supposed to be being disciples and also to make disciples of ourselves in the cities. So this is where our light should shine everywhere that we go. In the form of announcement, our prayer and praise concert. And this will be on the third. Our prayer and praise concert, this will be held at the Mount Grace Nazarene Church on the 3rd of July, which is a Sunday. And we all, who all who are attending, the fee is $200. Okay, so keep that in mind that it is a prayer and praise. You know, they always sing and pray for the things that are happening in both the country and the world in general. And in October, we normally have our links. Links is, October is links month, but it has now been changed to care and compassion. Care and connection. Care and connection. So our links person, our, it is now we are supposed to take care and keep connected. So it is not links anymore, it is care and connection. So we'll now sing one chorus as we get into the meat of the matter. Let's go forward for God. Go forward for God. Fight like soldier man. Don't give up. Father God has an army and he's bound to win. Satan is an evil force. He's fighting against the church. Put on your armor, pull out your sword. We're fighting in the name of the Lord. Go forward for God. Fight like soldier man. Don't give up, don't give in. God has an army and he's bound to win. Satan is an evil force. He's fighting against the church. Put on your armor, pull out your sword. We're fighting in the name of the Lord. Hallelujah. Let us remind, be reminded that we are fighting against flesh and blood, against spiritual wickedness in high places. So let us put on our armor, pull out our sword, which is a word of God, and let's sit and be a loser in our lives. We'll now go. Praise the Lord. Let's praise the Lord. Money matters. How many persons believe that tonight? Boy, I expected us to display full out, but I know there are some persons online. So again, I just want to welcome those who are joining by Zoom and those by Facebook. We're in for a treat this evening as we focus on a very delicate but a very important topic, money. Who can do without money? Now to address us this evening is one who is no stranger. Darren, Mr. Darren Brown. And who is Mr. Darren Brown? Mr. Darren Brown is a financial expert specializing in analyzing and reporting financial statements. He has earned his Master's in Business Administration from the University of Leicestershire, London. 10 years prior to that, he graduated from the University of Technology with a Bachelor's in Accounting and minor in Business. Darren holds, or he has held professional posts as Financial Accounting Superintendent, Business Advisor, Accountant, External Auditor with companies such as Jamalco, where he's presently working. Prior to that, Price Waterhouse Coopers. Darren, Mr. Brown is an active born-again Christian who has served in many capacities and he continues to serve in the Church of the Nazarene as a Treasurer, Trustee, Youth Care Board Chairman, Men's Ministry President, and a musician. I don't know how he does so many, very, very busy, but they say he's a chip off the old block, right? We're talking about our eldest son and we're very, very happy that he can come this evening and he will be sharing with us. Before I take my seat, let me also add that he is married, going almost 12 years. Married to a beautiful wife and together they have two beautiful princesses, Soraya and Sarah Jade. Darren. Say the next one. I'm sorry about that. And just one other information I wanted to pass on about Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown is also a writer. He has been writing a number of topics in the areas of finance, financial planning, insurance, and he will be telling you about some of the things. Always with a biblical view in mind and what God has rested on his heart. It is my pleasure at this time to present to you Mr. Darren Brown on the topic, Money Matters.
Good evening, everyone. I trust that everyone is here. Everybody is hearing me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, awesome, awesome. Indeed, it is a great privilege to be here this evening to present on the topic of Money Matters. I feel welcome, it's my family, Burnt Savannah. And I think by extension, I see some names on here, so I'm thinking other persons from the Jamaica West District. Welcome to, just a correction by Sister Brown, she said 12 years, but I'm telling you, December 27th makes 14 years. I'm actually married, so just a slight correction. But to God be the glory. I hope that this evening we all will get a renewed purpose of vision about money matters. I know we typically, a number of persons typically deem money as a theory. You know, some people deem it as evil. Money is not good, money is not evil and conjure up a holy path. And what I want to do this evening is to dispel the whole matter of money. You know, as children of God, I believe that we, we are, we are called to demonstrate a level of, of maturity in everything that we do and money is one such thing. So I'm just going to jump straight into my presentation. And at the end of it, I will field all the relevant questions you would deem necessary to ask, all right? Let me know if you have seen my screen, everyone. Okay, awesome, 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 awesome. So money, when we consider money, most persons. I'll start here with this saying, "Money is only a tool. It will take you wherever you wish, but it will never replace you as the driver." Keep that in your mind this evening. Money, and this quote is from Anran. "Money is only a tool. It will take you wherever you wish, but it will never replace you as the driver." Oftentimes our presentation, especially we are in church tonight, right? All my presentations are scriptural based. There are over 2,000 references in the Bible that speaks to money or finance. And as a result, there is no better book to lean on or to rely on in order to, to give us our direction when it comes to handling and dealing with money. So Romans 12 and verse 2 says, "Do not conform to the pattern of this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind. Then you will be able to test and approve what God's will is and his good pleasing and perfect will." Now I stop here before I go further. It is very important for us to have a renewed mind and how we manage and how we see the world is as a result of how we, 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 we think, right? So my next slide here will speak to the whole matter of scarcity versus abundance mindset. I think it's very important because most persons that we know, right? There are a lot of persons, their, 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 their mindsets are different. Some persons have a scarcity mindset, some persons have an abundance mindset, right? So scarcity mindset, individuals with a positive, with a poverty or scarcity mindset are perpetually, not perpetual, believe that life is on fear, everything is going against them, nothing them do. It now come out to good. And put it this way, not enough is there for everybody. So you constantly feel stress, a sense of anxiety and fear. On the contrary, you have a person with an abundance mindset. Individuals with an abundance mindset believe that everyone can get a piece of the pie. There is enough for everybody. Can push through tough circumstances, there is enough for everybody, no boundaries, a limitless thinking. And I think this is where as, as kingdom believers, right? That children of God, that is where we need to start first. Everything starts in the mind. And once we can control up here, right? Then now we'll be in a better position in order to know how we can execute this journey and how to better manage money. If you don't get it right up here, so you know, matter what you do. You know, some people talk about if they win the lotto, lotto, it will change their mind. I guarantee you, and researchers showing that, showing that over 90%, over 80% of persons who win the lotto, they broke again. Why? Because they don't have a renewed mind, so it doesn't matter if you get a money tomorrow morning, a big money or whatever. If you don't know how to manage it, it don't matter what happened, you'll still fall back in that trap. All right? Luke 14:28, 30 says, "For which of you desire to build a tower, does not first sit down and count the cost, whether he has enough to complete it, otherwise, when he has laid a foundation and is not able to finish, all who see begin to mock him and say, 'This man began to build and was not able to finish.'" This, this scripture definitely speaks to you sitting back, right? Calculating cost, planning before you actually execute something. You can't build a house without, first of all, knowing how much money is it going to cost to build this house? Where am I going to get this money from, right? And think about all the variables. I know a number of people start houses and whatnot, and they didn't even have a plan. So sometimes the house was there, right? But you didn't have a plan. No, I'm not saying that you can't start, you know, by faith. You understand, but there must be some, some plan going forward. How am I, how you envision completing the project? That just don't make no sense because at the end of the day, you start something, inflation, all the inflation happening now, prices on material and everything. Tomorrow, you end up, you realize, boy, you start something and nothing, it becomes nothing at the end of the day. So what are some of the pitfalls of wasting money? So I'm going to look at the problems and some of the solutions quickly. People, excessive spending are blind spending. You know, sometimes what you think is a little spending here and there actually adds up to a pretty large sum of money. For example, every day, every weekend, you believe, say, boy, religiously I must buy fast food. I must go KFC or Burger King, right? And then another thing, which predominantly bombard a lot of persons now, is the use of a credit card. Use of credit card, that is one of the major pulling back of a lot of persons being successful. Right? Credit cards, you know, naturally you link that now to a number of your online retailers, like Amazon, you know? So you'll go there and, and you'll say, boy, I like this thing, click a button, gone. Because it, it naturally does link to your account and it's gone, just like that. We don't even really think about it, right? Solution, just stop. If you are enduring financial hardship, avoid excessive or blind spending. That could make all the difference in curbing your spending habits. This is simplest step, could save you a lot of money and frustration. If you have a credit card, people can say, freeze the credit card. You know, freeze it, right? Or simply just cut it off. But of course, if it link to a, a Amazon account or whatnot, you have to go totally and get rid of it. Two, not having a budget in place or having any form of plan, period. Right? You spend countless hours watching TV or scrolling through social media. Why not even just take a fraction of that time, like say two hours out of a month to take a look at your budget specifically where you're spending your money? Because you need to know where your money is going. And I'll speak about that further. Solution, starting a budget can be as simple as collecting receipts for a whole month just so you know where you are spending your money. From there, you take a look at where you could make some easy adjustment to saving or spending less or paying off some debt. If you are not sure where to go, seek to speak to a financial advisor who can assist you. You know, a lot of times I would talk to persons about money, they say, I don't have the money. So I say, I'll often say, how much money you earn? You know where your money going? At this numerous occasion where I would have shared a budget sheet. And I remember in recent time, a cousin of mine, I shared a budget sheet and I said, write down every single money you spend. When she wrote it down, you know, she could never believe what it is that she was spending. I mean, it was a very detailed thing. And by doing that, she realized what are some of the, the little areas in which she could have got rid of some, some unnecessary things. some, some unnecessary things to spend money on, just like that. Because she was spending even more than what she earned. And in order to supplement that, you know what she had to do? Use a credit card. And she couldn't pay about the credit card every month. So guess what happened? The bank smiled when you can't pay back your credit card, you know? Interest is accrued on the outstanding balance every single month and they won't have no problem. And you go on and go on and go on until you have this humongous thing, you realize, whoa, how did I get here? So I advise you tonight. Take a time, sit down, carefully look at every single thing. From a JPS to your water bill, every single thing. You're supposed to wake up in the night, you know, you're asleep, you're supposed to can't tell me, say, I pay ten thousand dollars for light, we can't pay five thousand dollars for water. You know exactly what it is. Of course, we know it's a function of your consumption pattern, like keeping those bills. So that is something that you necessarily can't control, well, you can't control it by conserving. But we know how them things go on and what the prevailing conditions now that we are on, where, um, we are in now, right? Next pitfall of wasting money, spending money on wants before needs, right? And I'm sure I won't even go in this whole thing of wants versus needs. Because everybody know what I want and what is need or should know, right? You can't have, you have to be real with yourself when it comes to wants and needs. Make a list and write them out. Do not need to purchase, um, I mentioned that, uh, uh, earlier, the fast food or that new handbag because boy, it looked nice, Michael Kors, but I need to have it. I need to have it, I want it. Do you really need it when you have another bag already and the bag are treated well and good? Right? Or you can simply better yet put the money, you know, pay more on a credit card, pay it down. Solution, if your money is tight right now or, or you want to start saving some money, make some lifestyle decision changes. That would better suit your finances right now. You can al- always get back to buying those nice things, you know, that you want if you are financially strict with your wants versus your needs when you need it most. Buying things you can't afford. That is often a, 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 a a spot that many persons fall in because Mr. White next door get this. Boy, I think many forget this because, hey, me I work longer than Mr. White, me have a better job than Mr. White and whatnot. And you don't even know what Mr. White is doing to get the money in the first place. Nonetheless, buying things you can't afford from buying a brand new car to spending too much on your home, buying things you can't afford because you don't know your budget is a common pitfall. Right? Being able to afford a monthly payment. So most persons look and the reason would be, but I can afford the payment on the car. Yeah, yeah, I can afford the payment. But have you thought about everything in totality? Yes, the monthly payment may be manageable, but it is not the same as being able to afford the overall vehicle or the home, right? So some of the other things that you need to consider, even when purchasing a car, your, the, the, the interest, the insurance, the maintenance and having even additional money set aside for any emergency. You drive down the road, the tire bus tomorrow, where are you going to have if you don't have the money, right? Think about it. You drive your car, sit down, right? For how much weeks because you don't have no money. And the end of the month, come the end of the month, you still have to give the bank more money to pay for the monthly payment. Think about it. You know, a lot of persons don't really look at it that way, but because they say, boy, the payment, the monthly payment I can maintain. But they don't think about all the other costs that comes with it. So the solution to this problem, think long and hard about making big purchase, right? Do you need such a big vehicle? Do you need all the bells and the whistles on the car, you know? Or would you, or would something you still suit your needs? Something used like a used car and a brand new car, I could go straight to a tire to Jamaica to deal and say, why, yeah, I want a fresh new ride. Maybe a used car could be better, a second hand vehicle. Right? So and the same goes, and the same goes for housing. Remember the big and fancy neighborhood, right? Maybe I want to go live in, um, yes, in, in, in West now, I need to go live in paradise. I need to go and live maybe in the grill on the waterfront, right? And you create this big thing, but you can't maintain those, right? So you know, these, these are some realities that we need to confront. Living paycheck to paycheck or not having an emergency saving. This is something that really hurts me at times when I heard, I hear people talk, you know? Many of our members also live paycheck to paycheck, which means the tiniest unforeseen problem or emergency can cause a huge financial chaos. If you are not prepared right with the right amount of money saved. Example, a sudden illness, your child, God forbid, gets sick, your wife gets sick, right? A car has broken down, I gave the example of a car breaking down or whatnot. Or a major host leak, you can imagine rain or fall and now it's rainy season. And a big host leak and you don't have the money to fix it. What you're going to do? Solutions recommended to keep at least three months worth of expenses in an emergency savings account. So you can access it whenever disasters, you know, arise or any unforeseen um problems. So we mentioned earlier a, a number of things, so I'm gonna go into budgeting. So you asked me, so, so Darren, what is budgeting? One of, a, a, a writer which I subscribe to a lot, Dave Ramsey. He simply put, budget is, is you telling your money where to go instead of wondering where it went. Simply put, you telling your money. So if I get a hundred dollar every single week, every fortnight, every month, you telling your money where it needs to go. Because I'm telling you this, they have a fun saying of money has wings. And remember, I tell you, it does have wings and it always find places to go. If you don't tell it where to go, it will find somewhere to go. So we must keep track of every dollar we spend from our income source, whether it be our tithes. And I speak more about that grocery, your mortgage or your rent or even buying a new pair of shoes. If you don't tell your money where to go, it will gladly take you somewhere, leaving you wondering, guessing and thinking, where has it all gone? So how do we then tell our money where to go? By creating and sticking to a budget. Keeping good records. Proverbs twenty one verse five says, plan carefully and you will have plenty. If you act too quickly, you will never have enough. So there are four things that should be of paramount importance. And I often tell everybody this, you need to know what it is that you own. You need to know what you owe. You need to know what you earn and where it is and where it is going. You've got to know these four basic things to be financially free. Money is a asset tester, I, I, I often say of your faithfulness. God uses it more than any other thing in your life to test your faith. Why? Because it's a thing we have the hardest time with. Sometimes you wonder, um, boy, if, if we could have even kept this money, you know, how my life would have changed. But yeah, but God knows, say, boy, if you get this money tomorrow, you may be not even this money session tonight because you'll be living a different life, right? Maybe God even protect you from something, right? Because you know, money have a way of change. Well, it doesn't change you, it magnifies your character. That is what it does. So you would always have certain tendencies in you, but all it does, it magnified, you're too personal. So if you're greedy or you're didn't mean or whatnot, not necessarily change, you're just about, you're just about become one of the person more, just sort of magnify more. So it is said that money is a terrific servant, but it is a terrible master. When it masters you, you're always under stress. You realize you're under stress when you have money problem, you're fearful, you're anxious about everything. When you master your money though, when it is your servant, it serves you. When money works for you instead of you working for your money, then you have a peace. Proverbs twenty one verse twenty, the wise man saves for the future, but the foolish man spend whatever he gets. Now you know where we're going to know savings, right? So savings is the amount of money left over after spending and other obligation deducted from earnings. Savings represent money that is otherwise idle and not being put at risk with investment or spent on consumption. Savings accounts are very safe, but tend to offer very low rates of, of um return. A wealthy man by the name of John Lee Rockefeller, maybe some of you would know of him. He's famous for having been asked multiple times about the secret of his wealth. His answer became known as the ten ten eighty principle. And it's simply, simply tell persons, the first ten percent of whatever he made, he gave back to God. Very important children of God. Second, ten percent went into a savings account, our savings. And he learned to live on the remaining eighty percent. It is important, I can pause here about the importance of, of tithing or giving. The principle of sowing and reaping is very, very important for a child of God. One, it is a, it is a, it is a fate move, right? Think about it this way. God in his infinite, you want everything, you know, every single thing, every single thing on this earth, he owns. So he is indeed our source and all he requires for us is for us to exercise our faith. Our faith of simply ten percent of giving him that ten percent. And you know what? And I have countless examples of him thus being faithful to the ten percent where he, he, he come back to you full circle. And not even just then you get it bountiful, the blessing that, 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 that is bestowed on you when you exercise that faith, that faith of giving, right? Live on less than you make each month so that you can intentionally put away some for, for saving, whether monthly, fortnightly, weekly, whatever your pay category is, seek to put away a small amount to achieve your desired goal, whatever your desired goal is. If you miss one month of saving, it doesn't mean you failed, right? Or that you should just give up, just remain resolute and remain consistent. And persons would ask ten percent or whatnot. Persons will save whatever it is, if you have a particular goal, you know, you, 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 you set aside that certain amount in order to reach. Ecclesiastic Lev nine two says, divide a portion to seven or even to eight for you do not know what misfortune may occur on this earth. So we're gonna go into, now you have the money, right? And what you want to know, you have the savings and everything, now you want to multiply, what do you do with it? We're gonna invest it, alright? The proverbial saying, we say, one, one cocoa full basket, but what we say, we're not putting our eggs down, put all your eggs in one basket, right? What exactly does this mean? An investment portfolio can be thought of as a large pizza that is divided into pieces of varying sizes, representing a variety of asset classes or other types of investment to accomplish an appropriate risk return portfolio allocation, right? I try and to be very simple so everybody can understand. So think about a pizza, a big pizza, and you have a big pizza, we cut it up in eight different slices, different um portfolios, right? Meaning different instruments that we're gonna be investing our money in. Some of them, some of these types of investment include stocks, bonds, cash, cash, as you know, we say cash, cash is cash, right? And of course, real estate. Now, there are other forms, but these are some of the traditionally um known forms that most persons are acquainted with. Stock is simply is that known as an equities or security that represents the ownership or a fraction of a fraction of a corporation. This entitles the owner of the stock to a proportion of the corporation's assets and profits equal to how much stock they own. Units of stock are called shares. And I, I, I'll, I'll go um explain further when in question and answer, if you, if you, if you're not clear. Bonds referred to as debt securities or debt instruments issued by a corporation or a government. It is more, um, more government, um, raised for you, um, issuing bonds, right? And this is basically raised from the public. Now I've been talking a lot, so I'm just gonna recap a little. A sound financial plan, I hope you're taking some notes now. So in that financial plan, it includes budgeting, keeping good records, saving, which include emergency fund, solid investment and being good stewards of your finances and the management of it. One critical thing though, that I didn't mention at the top was insurance, a very important part. First Timothy five verse eight says, if anyone does not provide for his relatives and especially for members of his household, he has denied the faith and is worse than an unbeliever. Wow, what powerful word. So insurance is simply, it provides a safeguard against any unexpected happenings, whether life insurance, health, home or anything else you, you need protection from a policy ensures that should anything go wrong, you are covered. We know that we're covered by the blood of Jesus and the first thing, and the first thing. But while we are here on earth, right? We need to ensure that we have that coverage. But what is the significance of having such coverage, one may ask? One, which is, I think, one of the, is at the top of the list, cover your final expenses, leaving a legacy, a life, right? Life insurance. I would have heard of instances where somebody would have passed. And you can imagine the family have been forced to borrow money to, to, to bury their loved one. Imagine that, all of that. Right? Another benefit of, of, of having insurance tax-free lump sum payments, right? Also, there is a potential to earn from future investments because your insurance have some components of it where you can, you can earn funds, cash component which is invested, right? And also it is a very important component now, especially if you are buying a house. Because all the, the financial institutions require you to ensure that you have a life insurance to secure it. And also on top of it, they want you to have content insurance. So everybody is mandating that this insurance thing you need to have it in the event that you, um, God forbid, you pass or anything like that, right? So earning a lot of money is not the key to prosperity. But how you handle it is indeed what is important, according to Dave Ramsey. The end. Thank you. Hello?
Okay, please remember you can put your questions in the chat. I see a hand that is up, just a minute. Um, put your questions in the chat and I'm sure Darren will read and answer. Or you can raise your hand and we will recognize that as well. For those of you who are here face to face, the mic is right there, you can just come forward and you can pose your question.
Let me say, good night, brother Darren, good night, everyone.
Hey, good night, Sister Ophelia, this is you, right?
Yes, I, I came, I came on late, but I did enjoy um what you have brought to us tonight. I really must commend you on the information that you give us. It's really food for thought. There are two key words that stands out for me uh when it comes on to finance and that is budgeting and saving. Uh, I'm just saying budgeting is very important. It is true because it helps me. And if we just take this, this tonight, this encouragement here tonight and use the information that you gave us, it will work. Because I budget before I get, I get paid fortnightly and before I get my pay, I make sure I started budgeting the key things. Before I get, I get paid fortnightly and before I get my pay, I make sure I started budgeting the key things and things that are of necessity. And I make sure I put them down on a list before I start spending and it works, it helps me not to overspend. And another one is saving, saving is very essential, it's very important for future. And I hope this information that you will send it to us so we can have it to read for, for future use for record. I hope that you will give it to Sister Brown to send to us, thank you so much, I do appreciate this encouragement tonight, essential.
Well man, thank you, thank you.
I just say that it is, um, on Facebook, so if you need to go back, those of you who need to go back and listen, you can go to Facebook. And you should be able to pick it up there, alright? But I will send as the request has been made, questions please?
Okay, I see a question in the chat here from Nadine Scarlett. How much do you recommend one should put into jumpstart one life insurance? Um, thank you for that question Nadine, um, very good question. I, I would yield on the side of caution though. Um, it would be dependent on one, your, 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 what, 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 at what age you are starting. So this is something that you would really need to speak with a, with a life insurance representative. Because they do have the, 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 um, the calculator that, 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 that gives you the, the. Um. The computation as to what it is that you would need to be paying. But in any, in, in anything, it is, it is best and much cheaper if you start with insurance from earlier. So for, for younger persons here, the, the, i- i- it is much cheaper. And it's better preferred to start from the earlier. At the earlier, of course, you know, um, cumulatively, it would be, it would be better. If you are much older, it, the, the, the insurance premium would be much higher. So I advise you to speak with anyone of life insurance representatives, whether from Sajik or, or wherever, which one of these financial institution. To sit down and they can bring you through that computation.
Remember please, have your questions, we're just gonna give a few more minutes, so please put the questions in the chat.
I think in the meantime, I can, I, I, I'll mention the fact that, um, I just figured out on the importance of the whole budgeting thing. I know some people get overwhelmed with this, the whole budget, um, budgeting. In terms of doing it, they say it is time consuming and the rigidity of budget, you know? Tend not to be, the, it tends not to be fun, you don't get enough room, but I. I suggest and I implore you, you see, once you start, and Sister Ophelia alluded to the fact that, you see, before you get that money. You need to tell that money where it is going to go, right? You have to tell you, you have to be very deliberate about it. So you know you're gonna get a hundred dollar, right? You write down everything that you know that it's, and you have to be, you have to stick to it, stick to it, you do that. And then little by little, you know with the savings you could have, ah, 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 a little, and that is how you get it. But you have to be very purposeful, you see, if you're not purposeful, I am telling you people. And I, and I, and I would have gone through this, um, years upon years where I would have gone through a number of pitfalls, number of pitfalls that I spoke to. In the presentation, I too would have experienced it, but I have learned from all of these things. So now I'm in a better position that I know I can speak to persons definitively about the importance of being prepared and planning. You literally have to plan your future now, you have to plan, if you don't plan, you'll plan to fail. I see a question here, you do recommend investing in like sigma fund and buying shares. Thanks for that Kaidian, um, good, 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 good question. Now, I often said to people again, right? Um, I'm not a licensed financial advisor, so I would not necessarily give any advice in terms of which stocks or whatnot to invest in. I would, I'll tell you to speak with a licensed financial advisor or any one of these institutions. But what I can say, you mentioned the sigma fund, right? And this is something that Sajik would have had, are, are buying shares. Now, a lot of these institutions, they have similar fund portfolio. And when you talk about the fund, the fund, fund in particular is, is, um, it's a pool of funds. So everybody would, would bring in their amount, invest their amount, right? So it's like a pool, so everything go in one pot, that one pot, um, accumulate to a big money. That big money they use now to invest in real estate, um, whether they, they're investing in stocks with companies. And the interest that accrues now redone to everybody that put money into that fund, that is simply how it works. I hope you, you understand, um, so. All of them have their varying funds, what is important though, as an investor, your tolerance for risk. So this is a very important to your tolerance for risk. Some people are risk averse, some people, you know, like lose no money, so they want to make sure whatever they have is there, right? So your tolerance of weeks, so that is why I, I often say you have to speak with somebody in the field to, they'll, they'll do an assessment of your tolerance. Where with some people, them, them into high risk, right? So they're higher the return, but of course they know it's the converse, right? Because a lot of these are very speculative, right? So you have secure, um, investment that you won't necessarily get that high level of returns as some other, as, as other, um. As other investments that you would invest in. Buying shares, um, again, simply, as I had mentioned in the presentation, the share is basically your ownership in the company. Is that, is that, is that, is that an allotment that you get and you get that based on how much stock you buy, right? So you are literally a part owner of any company. So if you have stocks in a N C B, you're a part owner of N C B, as little as it is, yes, you are an owner or whichever stock it is. And of course, you know how the benefits from a stock accrue, there is two, I'd say three. You can get dividend from, from a share based on when the board of directors, based on the performance of a company. And if, and the board of directors would declare a dividend payout, right? So you can get paid from that. And of course, you can also benefit from the, you will call it capital appreciation of the share, meaning you bought the share at a dollar. And it go by three dollars, of course, you know, if you chose to sell it at three dollar, you know, you get the, 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 um. Net benefit of two dollar or whatever it is, right? So I believe I would have answered your question adequately, if not, I can give more clarity.
Hello, good night.
Hey, good night.
I'm Janice, what is about simple partner if that is enough?
Yes man, we are say partner, and that's the thing, yes, a partner, yes, um, partner is enough. But remember, you add the, the partner is simply, simply this, you, you contribute ten thousand every month, ten percent in there. You get a hundred grand when your time come get the draw, that is it, right? The investment, you have other investment that you can earn greater returns on it, right? You can get greater returns, so it all go back down to your rest allowance and what is that you want to receive, right? I don't necessarily encourage people, if you really want to make money, you're not going to put your money in a regular savings account. A regular savings account give you what, zero point zero zero? You have other, um, investment accounts that are pretty much better than a regular savings account that you can earn more. But back to your question about the partner, yes, but I've learned though, that we have to be careful which partner you join. Because on more than one occasion, I hear a lot of people follow with this whole partner thing, man run off with people money. You don't get your money and you're wholly a problem, so. It's very important that whatever partner you join, very trustworthy persons are, are involved in it. But I encourage partner and I guess you can do the partner with the credit union, I'm a very strong advocate for, for, for the credit union and they do have partner plans.
So if any bank you can join?
Yeah man, you can join any, any bank, I am not, I'm not an advocate for any bank in particular, so I won't tell you which bank to join. But, um, any, 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 any financial institution, all of them pretty much gives the, 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 um. The same level of, of, of service. I, I would, I highly encourage though, that you join a credit union. A credit union is, is, I put it, it's more people friendly, it is for the grassroots man. You understand, more than the financial institution, um, they, they, they establish, the bigger banks, right? And in terms of some, um, facilities that they have there, they have a number of facilities that cater to the common man. And you necessarily need, if you want a loan or whatever, right? The rigmarole you might go through at one of the financial, you might not go through at the credit union. So I encourage you to, yeah, looking to joining one.
Thank you.
Yeah man, you're welcome. I see, oh, sorry, I saw his, and hope, oh.
Alright, good night.
Yes, good night.
Alright, um, we know that when we are employed, most companies always have this clause about, um. What you call conflict of interests.
Right.
And sometimes it prevents us from, you know, engaging ourselves in, in additional income streams.
Right.
Where, where you can, you know, do more than one thing to earn money. But how strongly do you recommend, um, um, diversifying your income streams?
Yes, thank you for that question, Mufat, um, boy, especially in this very time, it is very important for you to find something additional. I mean, it. First of all, it is, it is dependent on where you are in life or what it is, or where. For some persons are comfortably with their nine to five and they live comfortable, right? In terms of what they can do and they are fine. Now, to answer your men, you started a question with the conflict of interest. I know most, most, um, companies, once you declare that, there's, there's a declaration like, for instance, my, my, my place of employment now. If, if I sit on a board or anything that would conflict with the, the, um, the organization, I definitely have to declare all of that. So I know typically they'll allow you to declare whatever, but I believe you shouldn't have an issue if you are not, you are not competing with your regular eight to five. So your regular time that you give your job, you're from your eight to five, you do it and you do it your best unto God. You give them a time after that, you do your one thing, nobody can really govern what you do over it. But it is very important that we find additional means of income, especially in this time to, to also, I would say. I put it this way, regular nine to five, um, build your life. But after, after five, build your dream, right? Regular nine to five, deal with your, your living, your daily living, but after nine to five, build your dream, right? So you need to find something that builds your dream, what it is that you're really desiring stuff, right? If you want to go and, um, to, to Europe, whatever, whatever it is, right? You need to find that additional source, right? That can afford you a certain lifestyle that you envision yourself doing. So I highly recommend if you can find something and understand there are so many things to do. I hear a lot of people talking about, I mean, I know what to do, but trust me, God give us so much wisdom, right? Even a little cook shop, I'll sell a, a little bake some things and sell, right? There are so many little things that we can really do.
Thank you, that, that's a great way and I like this thing you put on it. Your, your, your regular job, um, takes care of your, your, your living.
Yep.
And the extra takes care of your dream, I like that, I'm gonna write that note.
Yeah man. Alright.
Good night Darren, good night everyone.
Hey, night, night.
Yes, um, what are some of the important factors to consider when you're planning, um, of investing in stock?
Some of the important factors when you're investing in stock?
Yes.
So first of all, as I mentioned, stock, a stock is, is pretty much a share in a company, like a ownership. So first of all, you need to know, one, know the company that you're investing in, right? You need to be, you need to be reading about the company because that is the way how, um, your, your stock will appreciate in value based on the performance of the company. Right? So it is very important for you to know the company that you're investing in. Typically, when a company is going to get listed, what they do, they have, um, what you call a initial public offer, where they will give out the prospectus. And that speaks to the, 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 um, it gives you financial information about the company. It also details what are the company's plan, short term, medium term, long term. So it tells you a whole lot about the company, so you have to have an understanding about it. A lot of persons now getting this whole hype about, yeah, buying stocks and stuff, but they don't really understand it. And most persons is there, you know, speculative thing, boy, if it go up this much, yeah, they never get, it's a mega jump. But it there, it, it, it's, it's a little bit more than that. So I say for you, if you're gonna immerse yourself or you want to get, um, interested in it, learn more about. Learn more about what you're going to put your money in, not give anything at all, you have to get to know it, right? And then, and then you have to watch it, watch the performance of the stock. So that is why some persons more lean towards allowing like the investment, um. Persons like investment manager to manage their portfolio, whether you put it in a phone or whatnot. Because you don't really have the time to really sit down every day and watch business news. Although I highly recommend that you, you, you read business journals, that if you are so inclined to kind of have an understanding of what is happening in the market. But that is why a lot of persons would now invest in the funds. I, I spoke about sigma finance earlier, right? Because that is managed by now one of the, the investment managers at the varying institution, right? So what you, you can go and buy shares for yourself and do it. So if you have, um, have that mindset and you want to do it, because I invest for myself using a, on the platform, buy, buy and sell stocks and all of that. But it is something that you really have to discipline and, 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 and watch it.
Okay, um, thank you, um, I really, um, get a lot of like out of it. Because as I said before, I remember one time when I was working in Negri, I didn't know much about stock. And then, um, like a couple of friend of us, they were talking about, um, buying stock. And therefore I, um, you know, you don't know much about it, as I said, we should read about it. And I was planning of doing it, but after, um, I realized that sometimes when you buy stock. Like if the stock market go down, you can lose your money and stuff like that. So when I, when I read, when I reached to that point, I said, boy, no boy, I, I can't bother to buy stock. And then if stock market go down, I lose all my money and I'm not rich. I, I, I said, if I ever do that and I lose my money, then it would be a nightmare for me. So I mean, I'm sorry, like, I'm not really sorry, but I really enjoy what you're doing. And I wish you could come more often, that we can get better knowledge, you know, of these things. Because a lot of us would like to invest and do other things, but we don't have the knowledge of doing, you know? So I really enjoy it, honestly, I really do. At first I, I did say like a, so a little bit, I don't know if I want to listen because I have so many things to do. But then, you know, something say, oh, it's Darren, listen, listen, and trust me, I get, yeah, honestly, but thanks much.
Alright, yeah man, yes, please, so the, the, it's important. Alright, yeah, man, yes, blesses. So the, the, it, it's important though, that we don't, we don't shy away from this. Or we don't shy away or get scared of it, you know? Because as I say now, it, the whole investing thing, it, it is, it's based on your risk tolerance. So you have, you have other, um, safer securities that are there, you know, right? That you can put your money in, right? And they are of course, so there, there is, there is an investment portfolio for everybody. So don't shy away from it. If you can make two dollar on your, on your, on your dollar, it is better to do it than to have the dollar because you don't know what may happen, you know, in the future. So I encourage you to, to, um, get in the know, right? Speak to a, a financial advisor about it. They typically have, um, a questionnaire that you, you would do to understand you better. So like this, now that you just mentioned, that you mentioned sister about the, boy, you don't want to lose your money. That is one of the considerations that they'll put in the questionnaire. And then now they'll tell you wish type of thing, they advise you, which one they suggest you invest in, alright?
Thank you.
Yeah, man, bless him. Um, I see in the chat here, I want to take a little risk investment wise, yes. There, there is, there is something that I say, and, and, and I'm gonna say, real estate, that's another thing. And I think that may be a, a opportunity that a number of persons kind of shy away from. That real estate is one of the, yes, you have to have an upfront money in terms of doing it. But there are some small ways that you can earn from real estate. If you have a room, and especially you, um, all that is in Westmoreland right now, right? You see, well, I know Negri land stuff is afar distant, but right now you have a thing called Airbnb. I don't know, most persons know about it, but it's simple, renting a room, right? If you find yourself have a little one room or anything, I am telling you, that's another easy way to earn some money and earn foreign exchange at that too, a little easy way. So if you find yourself have a one room not being used, say, your, 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 your children gone, right? And you have a space. I mean, you can get rental income from renting that space. Or you can get the, the, um, short term rentals in order to generate some funds. So there are some small ways in which you can really earn money. And that is something that I encourage you to look into and to consider if your desires of making a little bit more to more. Now utilize what you currently have.
Ladies and gentlemen, I do not see any more question. And I, I don't think Darren is looking on any, uh, other question, no hands going up. So as pastor, I would like to express on behalf of the N M I department, on, on behalf of the church, my thanks to Darren, my son, my eldest son, of whom I am very proud. He represents God well. He represents me and mommy well. And I'm very, very excited that he is doing his best. Not just in what he's talking about, but he is doing his very best in the kingdom. And that makes me double proud. I want to say thanks to him for coming and sharing with us, money matters. It is true that money matters. It is one of the reasons why some people are really killing right now. Because money matters. And for those who are killing, they are thinking that they must get what others have. And therefore, any means to get it, they are going to try to do it. Because money matters for them, and they want to get rich by another way. But for us as Christians, money matters. Because God has blessed us with wisdom as to how to spend money. Darren touched on one thing that he knows as my son. That what, who he is and who we are, it's because we have first invested in the kingdom of God. My first investment is in the kingdom. My second investment is in myself. Because my third investment is in my family. Because I was before my family. So therefore, I have to invest in myself. And so because I invest in the kingdom, God has supplied my needs out of the kingdom investment. And thus help in supplying my family need. Darren, he is where he is. Because another investment that you have made and we have made in Darren is our prayer and our support. Tonight, I am very, very excited for you, Darren. I'm excited for your family, for Kim and Sarah J and Soraya. I'm very excited for what you're doing. And I look forward to be able to share your book in a short while with all members of my congregation. I believe all members of my congregation and your congregation, your brothers and sisters, because you are yard, a yard you come from, a yard you come from, will be anxious to be, um, having a copy of your book. We look forward to that. Again, thank you for coming on. Thank you again for sharing. And we look forward, as Sister Peggy said, to more of you. We hear your wife sharing what a wonderful message that was. And you, she speaks so much to our health. And you're speaking to our wealth, our wealth in the kingdom, our wealth in Christ, and our wealth as individual. Thank you. And thanks to Brother Fidel, who has helped to make this possible. Sister Brown, the president, and all members who are, are in person sharing. And those who are on the platform. I heard you call Nadine, and maybe you do not know, but Nadine is talking to you from the United States. And there are so many persons who are, who are watching. God bless you and bless us as we believe in church in only a few minutes. Just to remind you that first Wednesday of each month is fasting. And, uh, first Wednesday is coming up soon. Please remember that fasting in person starts at nine thirty. We officially come to prayer at nine thirty and we begin the, the fasting service at ten. So I want to, you to bear that in mind. Sunday, we'll be having the reception and our brothers will share with us their testimony. The, um, young adult class will be sharing in the praise and worship and also special song. And I am going to be ministering God's word to you. Looking forward to Dr. Henry, um, that's Andrew, and, uh, Reverend Dali, and others who will be coming in for crusade, which begin, uh, the seventeen. The seventeen will, will be on the road. And I tell you something, the seventeen, we will be in church. Then the eighteen will be on the road, different places. But on the twenty fourth and beyond, we will be in the church. So we're looking forward to all of that. Again, just continue to serve the Lord with gladness and note. He said, I will supply all of your needs according to my riches in glory by Christ Jesus. And that's why he has blessed you with the ability to think how money works. May we stand, please?